I'd like to call this back to order. We'll go on to our next committee this afternoon, which is Committee of the Whole. We have actually seven items before us today, and the first is an annual report from the Hearing Examiner. This is the annual report from the Hearing Examiner for 2017. Per our municipal code, we request this report every year to summarize the cases that the Examiner decided, and she will highlight issues raised in the course of a -- raised in the course of that year, offer recommendations regarding those issues, and a report on other work performed by the Hearing Examiner. That Hearing Examiner is Sharon Rice, and she is here today.
Hello, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be back. I have decided a short list of cases since my last report, my 2016 report, which was given, I think, in February of this year. I did summarize those for you in the materials. I don't have too many specifics regarding the cases that were decided to bring to your attention. I had some other items. So I have a couple of suggestions on the code, a couple of requests for clarification on the code, and more generally, I wanted to discuss with council something that was brought to my attention last week at the annual conference of the Hearing Examiner Association of Washington, which I think is of paramount importance in terms of my report. So if that's all right, I'll just break right in. Interestingly enough, I did address it in my report, which I issued to you before that conference. It's the question of appearance of fairness and how land use proceedings are perceived by general members of the public. One of the speakers at the Hearing Examiner Association was invited to give a presentation on how members of community organizations and general members of the public who are not developers perceive the land use hearing process. And as a land use hearing examiner who currently holds nine contracts, works with nine different government entities, and has done so for, since 2004 as my primary means of earning a living, this spoke directly to me, and the feedback wasn't necessarily positive. There is an impression on the part of persons who participate in these land use hearings that the examiner and staff are working too closely together, and that developers have too much an unfair access to the process. I will try to restrain my comments today, but just say, it was hard for me not to take the comments personally, because this is what I do for a living, and I firmly, and one could say fiercely, believe in my independence as a decision maker. So I tried to take this as very constructive criticism and have instituted, or I'm deciding and working on a policy of trying to make changes in my practice that would address some of the concerns that were raised. Again, primarily, this is an attorney from the bar, an esteemed member of the bar association, who said, "My clients feel like staff and the developers, planning staff and the developers, they call each other by their first names, they know each other really well. Clearly, they've had a lot of meetings that the public hasn't been, hasn't had access to, and this looks like they're working together." And what they said about the examiner is, "Of course, you claim to be independent, but you want to keep your contract, and so you're going to do whatever the city recommends." That dovetails, interestingly, with the fact that usually an examiner does go with the recommendation of planning staff. Now, there's an entirely innocent reason for that. It's because planning staff are professional, and they have developed and worked over time to ensure that the materials presented demonstrate compliance with criteria for approval. But understandably, to a citizen opponent or a citizen's group opponent, neighbor, property owner, a member of a community group who is investing their personal time in a community issue, obviously to them, they're going to perceive any, it's understandable that they would perceive things as showing that they don't have equal access to the process. The reason this is most interesting in the City of Bellingham is because before this presentation was made to me last week, we had already made changes in the City of Bellingham in how the land use hearings are conducted in order to address any possibility of this appearance of unequal access. One of the changes that we made was that planning staff does not present first in our hearings anymore, and this is a reflection of the fact that it's the applicant developer's burden of proof. In an appeal, it's the applicant who goes first, because it's their burden of proof. In an application, everywhere in the state, the staff goes first. This is confusing. So having discussed this with planning staff previously over the last year, we did recently, I think maybe in the last three months, institute a change where we have the developers present first. This can be difficult, because if they are not an engineering firm, and they have very little access to or experience with the process, they don't really know what to say. But they still go first, and then staff present their analysis to me. Another change, or another thing that Bellingham does differently than other client jurisdictions of mine, is that staff in the City of Bellingham, in their written report to me, doesn't say, "Staff recommends approval." They say, "Should the examiner find that the criteria for approval are met, staff recommends the following conditions be implemented." This is a, this is just language, this is a semantic difference, but it does have a different feel, and we all know language matters. So I'm actually going to be using my Bellingham guinea pig experience and taking this, these changes to other client jurisdictions, and that's the, that's one of the main things I'm intending to do, to ensure that the appearance of fairness is protected. I don't have any concern about my, about the actual fairness of my hearings. I'm very confident in the lack of my own bias when I do decisions in any of my nine client jurisdictions. But the appearance of fairness is equally important. It's actually a higher burden, and I am very committed to doing what I can to make this process be fair, both actually and in appearance, for all participants. So again, this, this kind of hit me hard last week, feels a little bit personal to me. I want to state for the record, I don't frequently get to talk about what I do in public, so pardon me for using your public forum to say, "As a contract examiner, I have made decisions for which I expected to be fired by a local jurisdiction because of their unpopularity and expensiveness." I haven't yet experienced that, but if I continue to do this for a living, it is inevitable that at some point I will make a hugely unpopular or otherwise controversial decision, and I will be fired for it. And that's one of the reasons why I keep a roster of more than one client, so that if that happens, I don't have to, you know, quickly change fields. I just felt the need to get that off my chest. Thank you for letting me do so. I have no concerns about the City of Bellingham's planning department and their awareness of the burden of appearance of fairness. They are all very professional, and I don't feel like staff bends over backwards to make sure that an application gets approved. They don't, they don't work that way with developers. So I feel confident in your staff. I will, however, staff, we've been meeting about every six months or, you know, a couple times a year maybe, to talk about how to make processes better, and this will be something that stays on the top of my list for discussions as we go, excuse me, as we go forward, just to remind staff of this paramount duty, that this process really needs to be fair, and in order to be fair, it has to appear to be fair. And so appearances matter, and how we handle things, all along that vein matters. I don't know if you have any questions about that.
Councilmembers, yes, Jean?
For what it's worth, Ms. Rice, I was here when we created the position. Ever since that happened, I have never heard a complaint from a developer or a land use consultant or a citizen about Dawn Sturwold or you. So for what it's worth, I think this city fully understands what it would be like if those were decisions were back in our lap, because it wasn't pretty at all. No matter what you do, half the room's not going to be happy with you. So take solace of that. You're doing a great job, and we're glad we have you.
Thank you. Let me, let me just pass on greetings from Dawn. She was at the Hearing Examiner Conference this last year, or this last week, so I got to hang out with her quite a bit.
Councilmembers, any more questions for Hearing Examiner?
Oh, I wondered, so it was specific to Bellingham?
It was not.
Oh, okay.
I apologize if I wasn't clear about that. This was statewide, this individual mostly practices in the Seattle area or right around Seattle area, but this was, it was aimed at the Hearing Examiner process more than it was at, at planning staff by any means.
And specific to land use, which is a huge topic right now across, yeah.
That's right. It was specific to the land use permit hearing process.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Sepler, our planning director, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I have a couple more things. I think we have a few more things to present, and then if I might at the end just respond, how we address those.
Okay.
Okay.
Just very briefly, in my report, I detailed, but I just want to bring to your attention very briefly, the, there is a process in your code which requires a public hearing for variances from the Lake Wadcombe seasonal development restriction. That's at BMC 168120. It's my opinion that that, this is, this is, this process requires a shoreline property owner along Lake Wadcombe to apply for a variance in order to make voluntary changes to their waterfront, which benefit Lake Wadcombe water quality. Strikes me that it might be a better use of the process to have that be administratively decided and with an appeal to the Hearing Examiner, so that if there are neighbors with concerns, the process is still possibly public, but in the meantime, the, the property owner can proceed faster if there is no concern to making the corrections, more cost effective for everybody. So that would remove hearings from my docket. There've only been a couple of those since I came on, but just to bring that to your attention. And the other issue that has come up a couple times since, in this reporting period, is the lack of subdivision criteria for approval. There aren't any in your code. This does make approving preliminary plaits, although there are few, a little bit more tricky, especially when we're implementing things through the infill toolkits, which is a big process in and of itself. So in my report, I, I provided to you three different examples, that some of them are detailed, some of them are very minimal, so that's just a range of potential criteria to look at. I had three requests for clarification in the code. Again, these are kind of minor, but it would be, I would like direction if, if I'm not doing it the way you intend. First, there is a requirement for a conditional use permit to increase the size of a residence over 5,500 square feet. I recently heard a request that was a second request for conditional use permit to increase the size of a residence. So it had already gotten a conditional use permit to increase once over 55, and then it came before me again. It's sort of an academic question, is, do they keep, do they get to keep going, or is there a limit? You are unique in having a maximum residence size in your code, so I was just bringing that to your attention. I don't know if, if there's a limit. The next is the fact that both the code at 2110250 and the Hearing Examiner rules expressly state that an appeal fee must be filed timely with the appeal request in order to perfect that appeal, and it did happen in this reporting period that someone filed the form but not the payment on time, and I dismissed that appeal. This was not a, this was not a first-time hearing attendee, but it also wasn't an attorney or a, not to my knowledge anyway, it was not a regular participant. So it could be that the council doesn't intend for appeals to be dismissed without being heard. I wanted to bring to your attention that I did so based on the language in this rule, and for you to know that that happened in case you, that's not your intention, you want to change it. And then finally, the, in that same rule, the Hearing Examiner rule gives the examiner discretion to waive the appeal fee in cases of indigence. Indigence is not defined in the code, and having discretion based on undefined terms makes yours truly very uncomfortable. Just wanted to bring that up. Those were the only things I came upon in implementing the code that I thought needed clarification or might benefit from revision. That's it. I'm done.
Great, thank you very much, council. I'll go to straight to Mr. Sepler.
If I might just to frame responses, we don't need responses or direction on those today, but we will be taking them and putting them on the running list. Those are things that will be grouped together, we'll bring before both planning commission or this body directly as applicable, and we do that with all of your recommendations so we don't lose them, and when we do have an opportunity, we can make the revisions that go forward. In terms of subdivision, we anticipate having a subdivision ordinance come forward. You do a burning a candle at both ends when you have as many as applications we have now being reviewed, because the same staff that you want to review those subdivisions are the ones who need to help write the code. So we have to balance their availability and make that happen. It's not something we'd want to farm out either, because we like the knowledge we have locally on how our process works. As far as the clarifications, indeed, we need to address that issue. Hasn't come up before. Often, these things are identified before an examiner, and brings it to our attention, and it is a policy intent that we'll come forward with based on other guidance in the code when we bring it before you and the planning commission. Thank you.
Councilmembers, anything else? Okay. Ms. Rice, thank you very much. I think identifying these issues is exactly one of the things we hope to see every year, and you did exactly that.
Great.
Okay.
One of the suggestions I thought from last time was, instead of two times a year, you were going to be coming back once a year?
Yes.
Is that just because we just did that in February, so this will be your normal time of coming back?
The, I made the request because it's consistent with what other jurisdictions do. You immediately implemented that request, and I gave you gold stars in my last report. That last report, because I've never seen a council implement a code change that fast in favor of, that was amazing. So the once a year was just to make it more uniform with other jurisdictions, and I am here again for the 2017 report in October. I'm actually hoping to come back in September of 2018, because October is the Hearing Examiner Conference, and everything gets congested.
Okay.
So I will be calendaring next year's report.
Nice to see you. So thank you.
Eleven months.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. We'll go on to the next item now. That's a resolution setting the dates and times of the 2018 city council meetings. Every year, we publish our meeting dates one year ahead of time. This has been a draft calendar, which was circulated to council members a while back. As usual, we, we meet twice a month, and we tend to move those two times around a little bit to work around some of the holidays, and also to give a slightly longer break in the summertime. This schedule would give a two-week break around the AWC conference at the end of June next year, and give a three-week break at the end of July into the first half of August. Councilmembers, we're looking, I think, for this one for a resolution to adopt these dates, or discussion first. Jean?
Yeah, I just want to bring up Thanksgiving week. I'm not going anywhere that week, but usually we don't schedule a meeting on Thanksgiving week. I won't be able to make the afternoon session, but I'll be here for the evening session. I don't want you just to change it for me, so.
This has to do with meeting on November 19th of next year.
Yeah, it's Thanksgiving week, so.
Does, I noticed the 12, if it's a red holiday, does that mean that it is a city holiday? That's why we can't have it on there? I still work those days, so I'm just...
Apparently, it is a city holiday.
So there's no way we could do the 12?
You have staff to be here.
Yeah. Okay.
I understand Jean's concern, but I think it's better to meet on the 19th than the 26th, because people are...
Still full from Thanksgiving, I understand.
Yeah, and it's, it might extend that, that weekend.
That's fine. No, I'm just saying, I won't be here in the afternoon, but I'll be here in the evening. That's okay.
Well, no schedule is perfect. I'm happy leaving it this way, but is there any motions to change any of the dates?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion before us to recommend approving the yearly calendar for 2018. Although, any further discussion?
I just want, I know the council had changed when I first came on board that spring break time, that fits with Bellingham and some of the Wadcombe schools, so just glad we're keeping that. I really appreciate the council.
That's the Louise Rule.
Yeah.
It is.
Oh, is it?
Because she, her husband was a school teacher, and that's why we put that in.
I got young kids, so I imagine staff appreciates it as well, so thank you for keeping it.
Oh, I might want to mention one more thing. We're trying to streamline things next January for the reorganizational meeting. Rather than having a separate meeting, we'll try to do that at our first regularly scheduled meeting on January 8th. We may or may not have regular items on that day also. It might be a light schedule, but we're leaving it open as a fully noticed, regular meeting in case there are items, business that need to come forward.
But that is...
Wait a minute.
That's the day we all get sworn in.
We have, I have two different calendars, because I have one that says we're doing it on January 3rd.
That's out of date. That, yeah.
Why, why are we not keeping January 3rd for our reorganization?
Trying to avoid one extra meeting, instead of having people meet on the 3rd and then meet on the 8th, or just meet on the 8th and do reorg. Is that not the pleasure of the council?
No, I think it's, I think it's fine. Mondays, when we usually meet.
Right, so instead of an extra reorganizational meeting, we can just do that reorganizational meeting at our first regularly scheduled meeting. So we would meet in the afternoon, do the reorg. If there were regularly item, meeting business items, then the appointed new president would chair over those new items. We're trying to reduce one extra meeting that would be short and just for reorg.
Okay, so we're going to have regular agenda items on the day of our reorg meeting?
Leaving it open that possibility.
I'm, I'm good with that. I just, yeah.
That is the night that former council members will be sworn in to office.
Yeah, there'd be a swearing-in ceremony, so that would be the reorg and the swearing-in, but we're leaving it open as a fully noticed meeting in case there are regular business items that also need to be done by the council at that time. And my understanding, Peter, is that new council members, actually, their office becomes effective on January 1st, even though the swearing-in ceremony doesn't. So legally, we can meet before the swearing-in part. Peter?
Yeah, the swearing-in occurs in written form. I think the swearing-in in public is ceremonial, so, so your statement is true so long as you're sworn in, in written form.
And that would be done by the county auditor sometime in December after they certify the election results. Okay, so, sorry, I didn't clarify that on the reorg meeting. We'll try to save everyone some work.
Oh, I like it.
Okay. All those in favor approving the 2018 calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next, we'll go on to a third item, which is a minor revision of an ordinance prohibiting deer feeding and raccoons within the City of Bellingham. This was already approved for a first and second reading. We voted to pass the ordinance. Some Bellingham residents have expressed concern the ordinance could be construed if read a certain way to allow the enforcement against people feeding wild birds. There's been a recommendation that we change ordinance to add the word "wild birds," so it's clear we do not mean to try to outlaw that activity. Because it is a change being now in the third and final reading, it comes forward now to us in the afternoon for our review. Peter?
Move to approve amendment? Is that all we have to do?
Yes. We have a motion before us to amend the ordinance before third and final reading, so on third and final, we won't need to read in the change. We read it in, it's read in now?
Yeah, the fact that it's in the packet in written form means it does not have to be read.
Okay, and so all it will now say is that these rules don't include a person placing food on public or private property for the purpose of feeding domestics livestock, for feeding their pets, or for feeding wild birds. Those are not covered by this ordinance. All those in favor of the amendment signify...
Well, wait. Discussion?
Yeah, sorry, discussion.
So I'll be abstaining from this, since I did not support the deer feeding ordinance, just to let people understand why.
Duly noted. Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, that passes 6-0 with one abstention. Thank you very much. We'll go on to the next item, which is discussion of our 2018 legislative priorities. The City of Bellingham, which in partnership with Wadcombe County and with the Port of Bellingham, together we advocate for a shared agenda before the Washington State Legislature. We've been doing this now for several years. Staff are here to present a draft legislative agenda for discussion. I see Mr. Brian Heinrich here. To clarify, this is our joint legislative agenda. The county and city still reserves the right to, for city-owned, our own issues, to advocate individually and separately. Mr. Heinrich.
Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office, thank you. Yeah, maybe to your last point, Michael, that happens throughout the legislative session. This, the agenda is what we share with the port and with Wadcombe County. It's intended to be, present a framework to our delegations of 40th and 42nd, and of course, other legislators, that these are of interest to the three entities somewhat jointly. You will notice an emphasis in this one on adoption of a capital budget, the first, first bullet. We've identified the MACHA cleanup projects, as well as some additional projects that are in the stalled capital budget. Additionally, I should add, and this is covered a little bit later, under the criminal justice and social services funding item, the housing-related initiatives, there are several housing-related initiatives that are also stalled in the capital budget. So that's one of particular importance to not only the city, but certainly Wadcombe County and the port. You're, you're getting the first bite of the apple of the legislative agenda. This was our attempt, from a staff perspective, to expand upon what we've advocated for over the years, and with an eye towards the short supplemental, or, I'm sorry, the short session in the next year. So appreciate some feedback. I did include also the agenda from 2017. Just by way of comparison, you'll, you'll notice very similar language. We're actually fine-tuned some of the, the language, maybe to, to the Hearing Examiner's point that words are important, looking to broaden our, our scope, so that gives us a maximum amount of flexibility when we talk to legislators in terms of some of these initiatives. So happy to take your feedback.
Dan?
Is aquatic invasive species controlled, is there a recommendation to just take that off the table at this point, or?
No, that program was created, so that was a success, as it were. Happens once every, every so often.
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess I'd like to say that, I know that you just said it, and the mayor said it before, that it's nice to have a, a kind of a broad marching order so you can respond flexibly to whatever comes up, but I found two of the bullet points just more vague than I wanted to. Advocate for water resource policy and funding. It's really hard to know what we really want out of that. I mean, I kind of know what we do out of past history, but in writing, I, you know, what does that say? And also advocate for housing-related initiatives. Initiatives to accomplish what? I guess I'd want a little indication of kind of like, why do we want housing-related initiatives? You know, kind of the direction, the outcome we're hoping for, without tying us down? What is the outcome we want out of housing-related initiatives? More affordability, for example. What is the outcome we want out of water resource policy? Cleaner, protected water resources? I, I would like those two bullet points, just kind of a little directional indication put in them.
Okay, I'll work with my partners across the street. Those were, as I sat down with my counterpart, we were trying to, like I said, give us the most amount of flexibility underneath that, but your point's well taken, so we'll, we'll take another crack at...
Appreciate it. Just kind of a directional indication.
More finer-grained detail on that, yeah.
Dan?
Brian, was there any movement on the, on the local distribution of online sales tax? We had talked about that earlier in the year, and that came up as an item.
Yeah, actually, so that was a major initiative by the Association of Washington Cities, and they were successful. In fact, Representative Litten, in the 40th, who represents most of Bellingham, was one of the leaders from her position as Finance Chair. And I think the mayor noted it a while back, but she was also recognized for efforts by AWC as a local government champion. So that was, that was passed, and AWC, and I thought I sent it to you, but if I didn't, I'll send it again. It gives a distribution breakdown on what Bellingham can expect through future online sales tax collection. I don't want to guess, but I'll, I'll look up that number and come back to you on that. But it was, that was another successful area.
Mine's just out of curiosity. When does sessions start?
January, go back to the calendar here that we're just at. I want to say it is, I think it's January 15th.
It's a short, it's a short session?
It's a 60-day session, so it'll be done...
Wow.
Yeah, about six months later.
And Dan? Go ahead, Dan.
I guess I, I think I have three questions here. Is there any hope for better equity distribution for gas tax back to counties? My understanding now is it's based on population regardless of the, the sales. So Wadcombe County's a huge gas seller to...
Donor, donor county, yeah.
We're a donor county to King and Pierce and others.
Yeah, I believe for every dollar we get back from the gas sales tax, I believe we generate, I want to say it's $1.48. I might be high on that, but I'll double-check that. It's significant, and so I think the short answer is no.
Okay. And then the marijuana tax revenue?
Yeah, again, the legislature, I want to say it was, if not in 16, it was in 15, that they capped the excise tax distribution at $6 million. That is nowhere near what is generated, and that, that is largely generated within municipalities, right? So those are dollars that go directly to state's general fund, and I, again, I think certainly AWC and other cities will be making that request. I'd be very surprised if the state changes that policy.
Okay. And then my last question, I know that you don't have a crystal ball, but we have a lot of MACHA requests in, and we also have our triage facility to the tune of $7 million for requests in, we being the, our partners as well. For a 60-day session, do you have any, do our lobbyists have any kind of, you know, predictions on what might happen?
Yeah, great question. I've heard what I believe to be every possible rumor about the capital budget, which is I've heard what I believe to be every possible rumor about the capital budget, which is to say that following the outcome of the election here in about a month, that they'll convene a special session right away. Failing that, they'll wait until the legislature convenes and they will adopt the capital budget in addition to a supplemental capital budget. And then, so if you kind of envision those as your guideposts, as it were, I think there's any variation in between. I've been told with some certainty that there will be a capital budget. So I don't know what that means. Hopefully, they'll, it might be important to remember that the capital budget was largely complete before it sort of fell apart around the Hearst-related discussions. So these dollars that you see in the, it's not exactly these amounts, these are amounts that we asked for, but these have been identified as funded in the capital budget. So should they pass it, we should see some movement on these items.
Pinky?
Brian, one quick question about the transportation package. When were we supposed to have received our money for the transportation package to move on our projects? Was it 2017 or 2018?
No, I'll get the answer. I believe that Orchard is 18 and Baker View is 19. The Onramp is 19. I might have those reversed, but it was near term from the passage of that. We were one of the, we were on the front end of the package. Remember, it's a 10 or 11-year.
I do remember. That's why I was like curious when we were supposed, so we're not in arrears yet for that?
No, and we've, that language, as soon as that was adopted, we said, one of our goals then was to implement it and stay after. And so we continue to have those discussions, and our staff works very well with the Department of Transportation, and we feel confident that we're on track with those projects.
Okay, so that was discussion of our legislative objectives with our partners of the port and the county. You've got some feedback there. Now we'll go back to those two bodies, and they'll have their bite at it also?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any signal for the discussion? We'll go on to the next item, which is the waterfront district implementation status report. Staff are here to provide an update on the projects the city of Bellingham is leading in the waterfront district and coordination with the Port of Bellingham and their chosen developer for the downtown portion of the waterfront area, which is Harcourt LLC, on a potential amendments to the waterfront district subarea plan. Ms. Sundin, you'd like to start?
Yes, good afternoon. Tara Sundin, Planning and Community Development Department. Rick Sepler and I are here to provide you with an overview of where we're at with the waterfront district. Specifically, we want to talk to you about a potential subarea plan amendment and kind of, it's okay, it's going to be okay. I'll do it with you. I saw Terry, I saw Terry's eyes. So some of you were on council when we adopted this plan in 2013, and I know the mayor had indicated, and you probably heard it from me, and I think some of you said it as well, it was very likely that we would have to change the plan someday, or get to change the plan someday. Recognizing this is a very large site in Bellingham, and we hadn't had a developer onboard yet, so we knew that was going to potentially happen at some point in time. Also want to remind you that the waterfront district is 230 acres. We are not planning on proposing amendments for all of that acreage. The area closest to our downtown, it's called the downtown waterfront area, I think it's a little over 30 acres. That's the, that's the area that we're contemplating some change to. I would not say significant change, but some change to. But the Cornwall Beach area, the shipping terminal area, the marine trades area, we're not talking about any change, and probably a very, very slight change to the log pond area, to give some context there. So I also, about a year ago, provided you with a little overview of this draft vision plan. This was a vision plan that was prepared by Harcourt Developments. I think I presented, it might have been almost a year ago or a little over. And this vision plan has some elements that the city feels very strongly about. We really, really like the fact that this particular developer, Harcourt Developments, is interested in redeveloping the board mill building. We only have a couple historic structures left on the site, and I know those of you that were on council at the time it was adopted is retaining those structures was important. But at that time, we did not think that the board mill was going to be retained. It was in a parcel identified for Western Crossing, and the university didn't really see much use in the board mill building, but this developer does. And they've been working with the port and Western Crossing over the last year to resolve the land needed for Western Washington University so that this parcel could go to Harcourt Developments. If you ever want to check out what Harcourt's capable of doing with buildings like this and much larger than this, look at their hotels, Titanic in Belfast and Titanic in Liverpool. They've taken old industrial buildings, much older than things that we have here, and have turned them into really beautiful hotel and conference centers. So we're excited about that piece. We needed to serve that building too. The plan that we had adopted stranded that building so that it didn't have any street frontage. So we refined the alignment of Laurel Avenue to do that. So we like this grid system. It aligns with downtown's grid system. The other thing that we really like about this plan is it has a park and trail connection getting us through the site, all the way through the site, from Granary Avenue down, it's not showing it, but down to connecting to Cornwall Beach Park. Cornwall's going to be one of our premier parks. It's, yes, it's gonna, it's gonna be premier, it's gotta be. It's our waterfront park, and it's three times the size of Boulevard Park. So that's what we really liked about the plan, but at the same time, we let Harcourt know there, this was, this is a great draft vision concept, but it needed to be further refined. So some areas that we needed some further study. This point of access to downtown, it's been one of the more challenging pieces to this planning effort. We want to make sure that when we bring a plan amendment to you for your consideration, that we really know that a connection to downtown is going to work. This particular grid aligns here, this is commercial, and commercial can't go through until the railroad tracks are relocated. So we needed to focus some time on the Bay Street connection, and this vision plan makes that connection, but we felt like more study was needed here because it didn't seem like there was an adequate enough space to provide that connection. And what's envisioned is a parking structure. That is in our adopted plan. I think some people think this is a new idea. It's not a new idea, it's, but we just had it in phase, I think, five happening, so a parking structure at Bay Street. But that need a little more work. We wanted also to take a look at pedestrian crossings. So this plan, wherever we put this park, we want to make sure that where it hits Granary and Laurel are areas that work for safe pedestrian crossings. This is in close proximity with the railroad crossing, and when we design and build this crossing, we want to make sure that it is quiet zone compliant, and so our crossings have to be at such a distance. So we needed to look at that a little more carefully. And we already know that the closest crossing to Roder, this is our main arterial here, is somewhere around at this point. They seem minor, but what those kind of changes start to do is start to shift where that park needs to be installed. Also, the Port of Bellingham has expressed some interest in saving the alcohol plant, and this contemplates the alcohol plant being demolished, so we needed to look at that as well as the port commission's interest in using the log pond area, not for future development necessarily, but for today's development of light industrial. And so they were concerned about having too much park space dedicated to, you know, in that area. So we needed to look at a good interim connection, but still a connection through that site. And then we've also said that this won't happen because the other thing that won't change for the city and the port agrees and Harcourt as well is, we're not going to change how much park acreage is along, so there is no change to the park acreage along the water. So Harcourt took that information, there's a whole list of other items, and a couple months ago indicated that there was more interest on their part in advancing a planned amendment. Last week, they came with a couple of architects to work with our team, so Parks, Planning, and Public Works attended this, along with the port staff, two architects, and the owner of Harcourt and the lead Pat Power at Harcourt Development. And we spent the better part of a day working through those refinements. And I'm going to turn it over to Rick, and Rick is going to walk you through the work that was generated last week. And I want you just to keep in mind that the artists or architects that you see the drawings from are different than what they were, and so there is a different style, which just want to mention.
Thank you, Tara. Council members, we should start off by prefacing that nothing you see today replaces full public process before any items and any changes goes on. But in any discussion, we need to have something you can respond to. You need to bring something to the table that folks can pull and push and say, how does this work and what happens here and what does this mean? And to do that, we approached our brief design study with the desire to identify issues that we know to be extant. Tara did a good summary of those, and that slide showed them, and talk about potential ways of solving it so we could prompt that further discussion. The city's role in urban design really is threefold. It's to ensure the public interest is to the forefront and is maintained as we look at things like non-motorized access to and through the site along the water's edge, very key thing. We have to make sure that's superior, and we don't lose any of the good aspects of it that were in the approved plan. We need to look at circulation and infrastructure route work because we need to make sure, as Tara noted, that folks can get to the site, they can make that connection. Left without good connection, this site withers and dies. So it's paramount that we provide a multitude of ways to provide people to get to the site. The third is to ensure that the rules, regulations that allow for uses and activities serve the community, and none of the uses nor the approaches that were in the approved plan are being considered for change. In essence, at this point, it's how do you deal with the refinement necessary to go from a concept sketch, albeit a good one, to actually getting construction documents in and build projects themselves? So in doing that, the very first thing, we started with givens. We know that access to the site provided by Granary and Laurel, under contract approved by this body going forward to construction, will be quite significant. We further know that Waypoint Park, a very significant waterfront park, unchanged, will be going forward to construction. You know, often proponents might start by looking and saying, well, now that we know those two givens, how do we establish the public space? Excuse me, how do we establish the building pads? We approach it differently. We say, how do we establish the public space? And towards that end, our first discussion was draw out the connections that show how people could get to the site, through the site, go northerly to Watcom Creek and south to Cornwall Park and beyond. Those are paramount. They need to be effective in a primary design consideration, right? Show us how we can make a focus onto the site and provide destinations along the route. There's a tremendous opportunity in the sense that I think our waterfront programming, as approved by the plan for Waypoint Park, is stellar. I think it'll provide a great experience to the water. The recreation of the beach will provide an amenity and a focus, but we still need to acknowledge that we had to get there. And to get there through the site, we had to provide for that corridor. Now, that corridor needs to be a little plastic, but has to be of a width and of a presence that would support the long-term use by the public. An opportunity presented itself, and it was touched on in the original vision plan, and that is the tile tanks are iconic for this site. They're unique, they're a landmark, they're visible beyond the bluff, and they could serve as a central destination, sort of a node, that could allow for access to come from the easterly, access to come from the south, and access to come from the north. And that is a different experience than the waterfront park. That's sort of a civic plaza framed by those iconic images. So towards that end, we proposed a connection that might allow that to occur, and then we considered, how do we get folks there? How do you do that? It's very challenging in the sense that we do lie with plan. When you look at plans, the connections between the corner of Chestnut and Bay seem really close to those tile tanks. But if you stand at that corner, you know there's a significant bluff and topographic feature. So you need to mine down and say, how do we get folks from one of the most vital blocks in town to see a visual connection, to be able to go out and want to go further to explore? And towards that end, we explored providing pedestrian connection and an overview perspective of the public space by using the entry to the parking garage and the pedestrian corridors along that. As an idea, it's very exciting because it provides prospect. You can overview, you could see the tile tanks from Bay and Chestnut. And seeing that might prompt your interest to follow to the end where you'll see the further development in public space that will get you to the water's edge and get you to the South Bay Trail. In concept, we think this is very closely aligned with the vision plan, but it does perfect some of the realities of the site that we have to address. In addition, it preserves the same amount of square footage of commercial development, the same amount of square footage of parkland, but it tries to allocate it wisely to achieve an end. There'll be a number of folks who'll fly overhead and see the magnitude of the design, but there'll be far more people who'll walk it every day and need to have the meaningful connection. So towards that, this is the very first start. We're showing you something that's extraordinarily rough, but we felt encouraged that the things we liked best about the vision plan can be adapted to provide a very central and exciting experience for our community along the water and through the site and to the site. This is a vision looking over at Chestnut Street. We're thinking that that's actually the point where an axis, the axis is the thing where you have something dominant at the end, you look down, it frames your view and it draws you through. We think that we could have overview on that Chestnut Street end, leading into the garage, providing a pedestrian space that provides view, and you could see the two tile tanks just indicated of how they would be sort of like a draw as you go through. We think this is something we'd like to further develop in concert with the proponents because as much as we can draw the picture, without those buildings being erected, we can't achieve it. And they're very interested in constructing those buildings.
Tara?
Okay, so next steps, we do need to take that concept. So this was hand drawn with all of us in the room, so keep that in mind. We haven't even pulled out the CAD drawings yet. So we do need to work on it a little bit further, make sure that the transportation capacity served by that parking garage is adequate for the site. We need to take another look at the view corridors. I think pretty much every single view corridor's been studied at one point or another, so some of this is just dusting a few things off and bringing them back. We need to take a look at that railroad relocation just as a future phase and see how that works. And then the subarea plan amendment, again, it's just really focused on the downtown waterfront, specifically the park and the grid system, land use, the scale, the parks along the water's edge are to remain the same. And we're hoping that the Port of Bellingham and Harcourt, those are the two property owners in this area, will submit an application to the city by the April 1st deadline of next year for docketing. We have indicated that if they submit it earlier, that we might be able to bring that to you earlier for docketing because you don't have any other comp plan amendments in the, I guess in the program for adoption in 2018, so we have some flexibility for 2018. So we wanted to make sure you all had this update. The port commission was given a presentation last week, and Harcourt was in town. Take any questions that you might have now, or please give me a call if you get questions from constituents over the coming weeks.
Okay, thank you very much. Pinky?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Two quick questions. One, I'm curious, you mentioned non-motorized, like where the plan is to actually have boats come to the dock? Is there, can we know where that actually will be?
So, we have port staff here if we really need. We've got the dock in this area. I know that they had some, so this is the old GP dock, and the port is looking at retaining part of that, probably not the whole thing due to cost, but part of it. And then this is for mortgage, that's the anticipation right there.
That's my second one, or do you want me to wait?
Go ahead.
And then also, kind of curious on the railroad relocation. If there's some sort of status, I know everybody's kind of working together on this, but just sort of curious.
There's no status updates. This is not something that we're actively working on with Burlington Northern. One thing I really like about this concept and something that we tried to stress to Harcourt and our team, we need to anticipate that the rail is going to be relocated, but we need the development to work from now until that point in time. And this particular scheme does work with the tracks in place because what's anticipated with these reddish buildings, by the way, these aren't necessarily buildings but blocks, just keep that in mind, but this area is anticipated to be built up by parking garages underneath, about three stories with buildings on top. It provides a good buffer to the rail.
Jean?
Yes, the reaction you got probably from both ends of the dais, and I don't know how Michael felt, but in November of 2013, we spent nine and a half hours in this room. We had 26 amendments to the plan, and it was a long day. So I have a question for Amy. Is this more than a minor adjustment, why we have to go through the process of bringing it back?
Yes, you might be thinking about the interlocal agreement between the port and the city where we have our capital commitments to each other, and that agreement has the minor and major modifications where we either don't need to come to council because they're minor or major when we do need to, and we've actually had both kinds so far. This is the plan itself, and so it's a legislative process.
Try.
Any other council members?
Yeah.
Terry?
Yeah, I like a lot of the parts of it, but I'll wait to see what actually comes because we've seen an awful lot of things before us and a lot of, most of them are gone. The parking garage, we're responsible, if the parking garage is there, we're responsible for paying for that parking garage, correct? Because, and we don't have transportation impact fees from any of the development down there. Is that's correct?
Yeah, so I've been, well, no, that's not necessarily correct. So I've been focused on this plan amendment piece. That's one of the documents that we get to change. There's other documents that need to come along with that change, and one of those is amending the interlocal for facilities. And if you recall in that document, we are paying for the parks and pretty much paying for the parks on pace with development and as we can afford them and as we clean up the sites. Then, then the transportation piece, when we get Laurel and Granary in, most of our commitments in the near term are done for a while. We can build, we, they can build 1.6 million square feet on this site until another connections needed. That's a lot of development for Bellingham. But when that connection's needed, that's what we had agreed to do was build the commercial street, that commercial green, that's actually a bridge coming into the site. So that particular investment needs to be renegotiated between the city of Bellingham and the Port of Bellingham. So if we switch to Bay Street, we need to renegotiate that, but we have not started that conversation yet.
So parking structures are not the city's responsibility then, is what you're saying?
Parking structures for the private development are not, but a connection to downtown was a commitment that we made, so I think that some sort of public-private partnership might be on the table, but again, we haven't talked about that internally or with the Port of Bellingham.
Pinky?
One last question, but overall, I want to say that I'm very optimistic that all these people were sitting at the table together and thinking about what we can do. This is really exciting. I am a little bit unclear how the parking structure works, so would people just like drive right off to the street into the parking? Like what would they have to do to kind of get down to the, how does that work?
It's about, it's a number of stories down because of the grade separation. So imagine you're coming out on the top floor of the parking, and you drive down the ramps to the parking below it. And because it's the top floor, it could be right at grade straight out. The key is the cars would turn right or left to go to the parking structure, go down into that first level and down for subsequent levels, but straight ahead would be a public space at the end that would provide that overview. And that's the key. We'll have sidewalks, of course, and designed passage to really encourage people to get down to that area.
Another benefit of that garage is it keeps, you access it from downtown. So what I like about the idea is I think it extends downtown into the district rather than just connecting it, if that makes sense? Because we're going to bring Bay Street into the waterfront and overlook the water. The other advantage is you come in and you park in this garage, but it's taking all of that traffic off of the rest of the circulation in the district. So it's, we got to work on this with a transportation consultant, but I don't think it's going to be one of those things you drive in and then you drive out the bottom and go throughout the district. It's really to go and park and get to, get to the uses from there.
April?
I totally forgot about the tile tanks, even though I see them all the time. If we're going to keep those as a focus, this is probably too far in the weeds, but are we, are we required to do the seismic retrofit for those, or is there any requirement since they're already standing that we have to worry about earthquake? It seems like it would be very expensive.
We have, also in the interlocal agreement, which you'll become familiar with in the near future, I think, is a term about these tanks. So we have the rights to own those tanks, so they're owned by the Port of Bellingham right now, but we have the right to retain them, and then if we don't want them, we pass on them. But the tile tanks were something that when we were contemplating the digestors, I don't know if you guys remember that, but we brought that to you and we decided, you know, thanks but no thanks on the digestors, and they're still there, that the tile tanks were something that we possibly would retain, but that decision point is in the future.
No, otherwise, I'm also glad to see that we're all working on it. I think you hear a lot of different stories out there in the community, but I think our planning staff, what I've seen is really doing the best that they possibly can to retrain, and I love the idea of always looking at it from the public corridor, the public space. And I think if people can keep that in mind, that that is the direction. And overall, with that, I think we'll just have a lovely area for people, and it's very people-centric, so I appreciate that.
I have a few comments of my own. One, I'm glad to hear the tile tanks are being considered by all parties as a central feature. We actually had to fight the city to preserve them. They're one of the many older features that were to have been taken down, and I'm glad to hear that. The board mill, again, is one of those things which at times people thought it should go away, and now they're seeing it as a valued asset. I've never been a fan of the Commercial Street Bridge, so I'm happy to see it go away. I've never a fan of the old grid. I think everything we've done so far, I'm really pleased with. So those are, in my mind, like ratchets that won't go backwards, and I'm really happy with that. Also, most of the details, the standards and the regulations, the proportions of parkland, none of that needs to be revisited, and really happy about all of that. But there were a lot of long discussions that we had at that time, and a lot of important things were considered, and I want to make sure that that isn't lost. I'm a little bit worried that we're going to come to decisions and then it's kind of like, no, 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 remember, we already talked about this. Well, maybe you don't remember because that was four years ago, or that was five years ago, or even that was seven years ago when those issues were hashed out. So even though I see the majority of this being unchanged, I think there's a risk that we're going to open up a particular box and forget that we've already examined the contents of that. So I hope I'm here to point that out. I do want to raise one important question, which has to do with southern access. There is a crossing point on the southern point, there's a little red arrow on the map that says that's the southern point of access. That at grade crossing is due to be closed to us. And so as much as we need to worry about access from the downtown, if I had $40 million roaming around in my pocket to build something really expensive, I might spend it on the southern end, or I might want to consider spending on the southern end as much as on the northern end. I want, that was one of those things that was discussed about during the waterfront plan, and I don't want it to be lost, that there is a risk to the long-term viability of the entire waterfront, not just the 30, 50 acres up north, but that southern access point is really important. And bridging the railroad there is a long-term transportation and circulation challenge we need to keep in mind. So that sort of, you know, keep that in mind. Did you talk about that? I hope you did. Okay, this is just an update. Any further discussion on this?
Thank you.
Okay. We'll now go on to the next item somewhat related to that. This is an interlocal agreement between the city of Bellingham and the Port of Bellingham with regard to Waypoint Park, which is the parkland you'll see up on the upper right corner of that map or the part of that up there. The port and the city are parties to an interlocal agreement for facilities within the waterfront district, which we just talked about, which was dated back in December of 2013, and that provides for cost allocation for infrastructure improvements. And this interlocal agreement, which we've been talking about, sets forth a 50/50 cost sharing for the port for the beach that is part of Waypoint Park. So the park may be a city responsibility, but the beaches was dealt with differently. Based on a bid award to Strata Construction on October 9th of this year, this agreement finalizes the cost sharing amount the port will pay for Schedule B, which is the beach work, for the base amount of $154,000, which includes a 10% for quantity overruns. In addition, the port will reimburse the city for 50% of any approved change orders with regard to this particular portion of the project. Excuse me, I'm going to zip forward. Darn, we have a big schedule, we have a bid, sorry, big packet. Here it is. Okay, so the request for the staff is a vote to approve this amendment. Or is this not, we are pending, amending the interlocal in this case, or we're just approving the?
Approving this one.
We're just approving this expenditure. So any discussion on this item?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion before us to approve the interlocal agreement for payment for the beach improvements associated with Waypoint Park. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, that passes 7-0 unanimously. Okay, now we're going to do things slightly different. We do have one more agenda item, which is a budget work session for the proposed 2017-2018 Bineal Budget. We'll be having that in the mayor's boardroom. So we're going to go ahead and move on to approval for minutes right here in the council chambers first. We have one set of minutes for approval from October 9th.
For approval?
We have a motion before us to approve the October 9th 2017 committee meeting minutes. Is there any corrections or changes to those minutes? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? That passes. And now we'll also handle old and new business before adjourning to the other room. Any old and new business?
Quick.
Okay, okay.